Good evening. I call the January 21, 2025, meeting of the Sarpy County Planning Commission to order at 7:00 PM. Ms. Timby, could you please call the roll?
Ackley.
Here.
Brannock.
Here.
Mattia. Van Wielden. Whitfield.
Here.
Huddleston.
Here.
Dambinski. Weiss.
Here.
Kier Lieber.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I invite you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public meeting subject to the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A current copy of the law is located on the north wall of this room. Please feel free to review the law before making any comments. An introduction of planning staff and legal counsel. Don Simon, Planning Director; Kelly Jack, Planning Coordinator; Nicole Spitzemberger, Deputy County Attorney; Steve Preston, Deputy County Attorney; Lisa Timby, Permit Technician; Jose Garcia, Technology Services. Is Scott Bovick here tonight? No. Okay. The next section is public comment. This time is designated for individuals to speak and to address the commission on topics not otherwise listed on the agenda. Is anybody signed up to give comment or speak?
No one has signed up.
Okay. Seven, minutes approval. The first order of business is to approve or edit the minutes from the prior meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the December 17, 2024, meeting.
Motion to approve is written. Second.
Please vote. Four yeas, two abstained. Yeas, Ackley, Huddleston, Brannock, Kier Lieber, abstained, Whitfield, Weiss. Motion carries.
Okay, then. Let's move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Each agenda item will adhere to the following format as detailed in the Sarpy County Planning Commission's bylaws. The planning staff will introduce and briefly explain the agenda item. The applicants or the applicant's representative will be given five minutes to provide information about the project to the commission. After the applicant's presentation, I'll open the floor to public comment. Please keep your comments relevant to the agenda item and to keep things moving. Please avoid repeating what others have said. Looks like we have a number of people here tonight. So here are the rules for public participation. The opponent or proponents will have five minutes to speak. Anyone else who wants to speak in favor, against, or neutrally about the proposed action will have two minutes. You cannot give your time to someone else or save it for later. Once all parties that wish to speak have done so, I'll close the public comment portion of the agenda item. The applicant or the applicant's representative can respond to any questions or concerns raised and rebut any comments. Next, I'll close the public hearing, and members of the planning commission will discuss the agenda item. During this discussion, the commissioners may ask questions of anyone involved in the project. There is no requirement for rebuttal from others. There is also no time limit for this discussion. Okay, let's start with the regular agenda, then.
Good evening. I'm Julie Ogden, JEO Consulting Group Consultant for the county. I will be reviewing this application with you tonight. It is for a comprehensive plan amendment, otherwise known as a CPA because it's a lot easier to type, for the Meridian Marketplace development. So the application request was to change the future land use on 11 lots that were originally platted in the development. The current future land use is shown as low to medium density residential. They are requesting a change to a mixed-use land use. So the site is generally located southeast of 168th and Giles Road. The development, called Meridian Marketplace, was originally platted in 2006. It included 11 lots, of which two lots are currently developed. The roads are private roads, and they are all on easements, so there's no dedicated right-of-way. And it is immediately adjacent to the Meridian Park and Stonecrest neighborhoods. The Wilma Upchurch Elementary School can be seen there in the aerial as well. The request for future land use changed to mixed use. The benefits that that provides over the current future land use is that it allows for multiple use types within the zoning. So you can do a combination of some residential uses, some commercial uses within that development with no single use being more than 80% of the site. It also does provide the county and the developer with more input and limitations on how that development is not only laid out, but the uses allowed within it. And as you'll notice, based on the proposed future land use map, you can see the mixed use is already shown on the east end of this area at 156th and Giles as well. Am I not projecting? No. This, Julie. All right, is that, ooh, that does sound better. Right here. I probably don't need that. Not a problem. The mixed-use future land use is consistent with other developments in the area. Gretna's zoning jurisdiction is to the west and the south of this area. As I noted previously, it does allow for more control and/or limitations on the commercial uses within the development, and it does allow for flexibility in the design standards and layout for any proposed development within the area. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, so it is not necessarily development improvement-specific. It is how this is intended to look at the vision for the area. So specific details for a proposed development, which is the next item on the agenda, can be discussed under that item versus under this comprehensive plan amendment. And staff is recommending approval of the comprehensive plan amendment for the future land use as it does meet the intent of the comprehensive plan in and of itself. Does the commission have any questions for me at this time? All right, thank you.
I have a question for Nicole. Should we open one and two at the same time? Because I think a lot of people in the public maybe don't understand how they are divided.
Yes, you can do that. You can open up the agenda items, one and two. However, I would say that, as Julie said, item number one is not, I mean, item number one is not contingent or specific to item number two. So if you want to wait and open them both up, that's fine, as long as the commission knows that you do need to make multiple motions. Okay.
So I think at this stage, what we'll do is we'll just deal with one, knowing that two is going to come up. Because we have a number of people in the audience tonight, I would like to reserve them to the more relevant item, which is two at that point. Does anybody else have any input with regards to item one, which is just the master plan itself?
Are you saying you're going to open up the public hearing for item number one, or?
Yeah, I'm just about to invite.
Okay, sorry, I didn't want.
If there's any, anybody from the actual applicant who'd like to address the board on item one.
Thank you, county commissioners. Brent Beller, on behalf of the applicant, Meridian Marketplace 168. With me tonight is Vince Bellino and Adam Watson, part of the development team, as well as Kyle Hossi with E&amp;A, our project engineer. So I'll try to limit this just to the master plan amendment. And the reality is, in working with staff as part of this application, it really just became known that we would go the mixed use, which is really what's up next. But to facilitate that and facilitate the mixed uses, you got to amend your comp plan to allow for the mixed uses under your mixed use development agreement. I'll just point out, as Julie noted, so this project or this property was platted in 2006. So it was platted to have a grocer, be a sort of a commercial development. Those master plans are just that. They are plans, and oftentimes the plans don't come to fruition exactly the way we all envision them. So that's why we do these comp plan amendments, is to allow for different uses. And so I'll try to just, maybe I'll stop there before we talk more just at the next agenda item about what we're actually doing and proposing in conjunction with this master plan amendment, and then the mixed use rezoning and plat that come before you next. So I'll keep it at that unless there's any initial questions for me. Okay, thank you.
I'll open the public hearing for item number one. I invite you to give your input on the proposed action. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Then I will close the public hearing. If there's no further discussion by commissioners, I'll ask for a motion, please. If there's no further discussion by commissioners, I'll ask for a motion, please.
There's no other questions or comments. Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan as shown herein on the proposed future land use map, attachment number two for lots one through 11. Meridian Marketplace located in the southeast corner of 168th Street and Giles Road has the proposed amendment is consistent and compatible with the surrounding area and with the overall comprehensive plan goals and objectives.
I'd second that motion.
Please vote. You can introduce the second one, I'll get my stuff.
Yeah, okay. Item number two, Meridian 168, has submitted application through the rezoning from BG, General Business District, to MU, mixed use for Lot 7, Meridian Marketplace, and lots one through seven, and Outlot A, Meridian Marketplace replat one, and a preliminary plat and final plat of a subdivision to be known as lots one through seven, and Outlot A, Meridian Marketplace replat, being a replating of lots one, two, four, five, six, nine, 10, and 11. Meridian Marketplace, as surveyed and platted and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southeast of 168th Street and Giles Road.
Good evening, everybody. All right, here. Sounds like, can everybody hear me? Thank you very much. This application, as we had discussed, the applicant, as Chairman read, is to change the zoning on nine of the 11 lots. Lot seven, which is from the original development located right here, and then the replatted lots, there's three lots here, the two large lots in the middle, two development lots here, and the outlot, which will become the stormwater detention area. The current zoning is general business. The proposed zoning is for the mixed use development. We talked about the replating and the original lots. So site information, this is the same as we just talked about a few minutes ago, other than the two existing currently developed lots will remain as BG zoning, though they are not included in the rezoning. And this development is somewhat unique in the fact that it does not have an existing sanitarian improvement district, nor are they proposing to create one with this redevelopment. So the initial site layout includes 11 apartment buildings and associated garages and clubhouse with open space on the two larger lots. There will be the six commercial lots, as we had identified, four here on the west and two on the north, and then the outlot for stormwater detention. They are proposing what, what is a town center style concept where the commercial buildings will front on the interior roads with some on-street parking as well as landscaping in that area. And there are a number of sidewalks and trails throughout the area to make it more walkable. This is information to give everybody an idea on when you're looking at the street cross-section, there are two driving lanes as they are today. They will be widened out for the angled parking on either side, a six-foot landscape area, and then the sidewalks and/or trails on the outside with the apartment buildings on one side and the commercial buildings on the other. Within the apartment development, it will back up against three existing residential lots with homes on them. This is a representation of the grade and the elevation of the existing houses, slopes down to the lot development with the three-story apartment building, the 20-foot landscape buffer, and the fence that they will install along the property line. This is the style of fence that they are proposing to use in addition to the landscaping, which the landscaping will go over here in a minute, so you can kind of get a feel for what they're looking at. So on the landscaping, you can see there's a scattering of trees throughout the development. On the east property line in the 20-foot landscape buffer, they've got a mix of trees. They've got evergreens located at the ends of the parking areas, and they've got a series of planting beds that have, have both trees and low-growing shrubs, flowering plants to provide a nice variety along this east property line, and provide that buffer and screening to the adjacent residences as well as the school. They will be providing, as you can see, on-street landscaping to kind of provide that boulevard tree-type look. And there's a lot of landscaping being done within the apartment lot as well to maximize the use of that green space. This is what they are proposing for the style of apartment building. So this is from a development that this developer has done elsewhere in Sarpy County. You can see on the first floor, there are some, there are some garages available for rent. The top two floors are all apartments, and then there's a few apartments also on the first floor, and you can kind of see that in this rear elevation of this, some of the patios that go along with those first-floor apartment buildings. The garages that will be separate and also available on-site will have, be this style of construction with a varied roof height, as well as some, not just siding, but also some, some stonework on them. And this is a general representation of what the clubhouse could look like with finishes to blend with the, the building in and of itself. There is a pool proposed with the clubhouse as one of the amenities on-site. So in review of this, Giles Road was paved after 2006 when this was first proposed, but obviously prior to this development. And we are asking, as part of this agreement and development, for them to pay their share of those road improvements for their frontage. They would also be required to have a cost share in a future signal, which is anticipated at the 168th and Meridian Street intersection. And that is located on the southwest corner of this development. Their interior roads will remain private and remain on the easement. And the traffic study that they had prepared for this indicated the need for right-turn lanes on 168 at Cary into the development, as well as on Giles and 158th Street, and those would be required to be constructed with the first phase of the apartment construction. So in going through the recommendations that staff has on this, we are recommending approval on the zoning from General Business to mixed use for the lots identified, approval of the preliminary plat, and recommending approval on the final plat, subject to the conditions that we had placed in the staff report, which include an updated wastewater service agreement with the city of Gretna, construction of the right-turn lanes, as we had just discussed, reimbursement for the Giles Road construction that was completed in 2009, contribution towards the installation of the signal at Meridian and 168th when it is installed, and as always, addressing the comments, other comments provided by staff and public comments that were received after the production of the staff report but prior to our meeting tonight, which have been provided to all of you at your desks this evening as well from some residents in the area. Before we have the developer come up, do you guys have any questions for me?
I do. The staff report mentions a traffic study being done prior, and now the change to apartments lessening that traffic impact. You want to talk about that real quick?
Correct. When, at one point in the past, the two large lots were looked at for a potential grocery store. I believe it might have been a baker's, but I'm not 100% sure on that. And a traffic study was done at the time to see what the impact that traffic would have on the area, potential signalization, additional turn lanes and such. That was the only traffic study that we had found in our files when this developer came in. There either wasn't a traffic study done with the original development, or one was not required, staff was not sure on that. But we provided them and asked them to just update that, to compare the apartment demands with that, not necessarily, I mean, they looked at, they looked at traffic today, but also compared to how that grocery store would have impacted. And yes, the apartments do have less traffic demand on the adjacent roads than a, than a grocery store.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else for me at this time?
Question, the report talks about one of the apartment buildings doesn't meet the setback requirement.
They have corrected that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I meant, I meant to mention that, I apologize, so thank you for bringing that up. Perfect. All right, I'm just going to bring a couple things up for the developers, so clicking around things, there we go. All right.
Would the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address the board?
Thank you, commissioners. Brent Beller, again, 1140 West Center Road. Julie did a great job, stole my thunder about how the, the various intricacies about what we're doing. But let's start with, with the easy part. So like I mentioned, this, this was platted initially in 2006 for a commercial development. The commercial lots that front 168th and Giles on the north side, those aren't changing. So those are still commercial uses. And I think what it's important to note, and I'll date myself a little bit, but First National Bank was originally on that Lot 8, which is the northwest corner. So First National Bank, I actually represented them when they acquired that back in 2006. They put a bank there, they left. And sometimes this happens in development, things just don't go the way we want. So this property has basically sat vacant since 2006, other than the other daycare user that's down in the south. So, you know, the, the reality is, is nothing is changing from what exists today as far as zoning and what we plan to do. We still plan to do commercial lots all along Giles and 168th. It's really what's happening with the multifamily, and so I'll probably talk about that the most. Julie did a great job laying out exactly what we're doing. You have 11 buildings, 26 units in the building. We'll have 582 parking spaces. You're only required to have, I'm sorry, 589. You're only required to have 572. We will self-park this. There will be no parking into the neighborhoods to our east or to the south. You can't go charge people rent and not have them park on your site. That's just a given when you do multifamily nowadays. This is market-rate apartments. There is no Section A, there's no low-income housing component to this. The developer, Vince Bolino, he is an in-town developer. He manages, he builds, he does everything in-house. So you have a local developer controlling all this. We had a neighborhood meeting, and we told them, go look at Deluxe, which is right down off of Portal, or the Parker, which is right across the street. Those are great examples of what Vince plans to do here. You don't go spend $53 million on a multifamily development and not care about your product. You got to get a bank loan, you have investors. This is top-notch, this is high-quality construction. So it really comes down to the neighborhood meeting. We had great input from the neighbors to our east of the Stonecrest and Meridian neighborhoods, and some of the representatives from their SID, I think it's SID 257 over there. And really, the, the issues they touched on were how this, how the multifamily lines up with the school, traffic concerns, and then just overall safety. And so one of the easy things that we said right off the bat when we were talking to some of the neighbors were, I think there were concerns about children playing in the, as you can see, there's a, there's a big playing field to the east of us, children coming into the multifamily. And I think the reverse concern is there for us. We, we don't want children coming over there, we want to keep them safe. And so one of the things we gave them, and is, is it easy, is you have that six-foot perimeter fence around the whole thing, around the whole multifamily. The other piece is, you do have that landscaping, landscaping component that kind of sets that buffer between the multifamily and the school, as well as those three residences on the north. The biggest issue is probably traffic. And I think in, in talking with staff, and let me back up a minute, I, I should commend staff for the amount of work that we put into this. This started last summer, it went all through the summer, and then we kind of paused because there were some additional concerns last August through the fall. So we worked with staff to get to where we are today. And part of that was just the concerns about traffic. And I think there's a traffic issue there now. As you know, Sarpy County is leading the expansion of 168th and that to four lanes. We explained to residents how that will eventually be four lanes south of Giles, but that could be seven years off. And that, again, that's just depending on when the county thinks it's feasible and financially feasible at that. But really, it's on the north side, as Julie mentioned, we'll have a right-turn-in lane so that as traffic is going east on Giles, they'll have that right-turning on 165th Ave. And the same is going to be true down on Cary Street, as folks, because there is some stacking that will happen on 168th as you go north. And so that our traffic will go into the development, and there'll be a right-turn lane there as well. The biggest probably ticker with, with residents was just the stoplight at 168th and Meridian. We get it, we acknowledge it. As I understand it, it's tough during school hours to get folks in and out of there. We support there being a traffic light there whenever the county deems it feasible. As Julie mentioned, part of our mixed use development agreement and subdivision agreement is we have a contribution to that streetlight, and I think the SID 257 would contribute to that as well. And I think it's really important, when you talk about traffic, and we talked to residents about this, this was zoned for a grocery store. And so in that traffic study that you alluded to, the actual count was about 12,500 vehicles that would just come to a grocer. Grocers have looked at this site, they passed. We've talked to our seller about it, I think you're right, there were, there were at least two that came in, took a look at it, and the infrastructure as far as what they need, traffic counts, all that sort of stuff, this is just not a site for a large-scale grocer. And so that's why this site has sat there today. But 12,500 vehicles could come to this site as it exists today. What, what we do is you analyze the traffic off of the multifamily, and that is reduced to 1,500 cars a day. So that's about an 88% reduction in traffic when you move from multifamily, I'm sorry, from grocer to multifamily. The other thing, and, and once you explain that to folks, I think there is a desire of the neighborhood to have these commercial lots filled in. I think everybody would really like to have a coffee shop, a local diner, or a restaurant they could walk to. That's what really makes neighborhoods flourish. But you can't get those commercial developments to go there unless you have density. And the market is telling you, you need density at this, at this particular location. It's an oddball for the county. I understand the county doesn't have a lot of true commercial districts left in your jurisdiction, this might be one of the last ones. But the reality is, is with density comes development. We only follow car counts. And so Mr. Bolino is going to, will own all of these, and his hope is that once you bring density with the multifamily, those other commercial lots will pop. So with that, I might sit down, and if there's any follow-up questions, I'm happy to answer those. But as Julie mentioned, this does come to you with the planning department's recommendation for approval, and we appreciate everything to get us to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing for this item. I invite you to give your input on the proposed action. Is there anybody who would like to address the board? Then I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions or comments from the commissioners?
I got just a quick one. On those traffic studies, were those, was any of the, was the timing of the day kind I guess the question is, there's 1,200 cars, they were anticipated, those would be from 7:00 to 9:00, and 3:00 to 5:00?
Yeah, there is, they, they do calculate that, and I believe you're correct. It is, I think it's 8:00 to 9:30, and maybe usually 4:30 to 5:36 is usually when they do those AM/PM counts. So in that traffic study, that's a, as part of your report, they'll delineate exactly where the AM/PM times are. I, I use the total, but yes, it's in there.
Is there any further discussion?
Was that the point? If no one else has got questions or comments, I'd be prepared to make a motion.
I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd recommend approval of the rezoning from BG to General Business District to MU Mixed-Use District on the property to be known as Lots 1 through 7, and out Lot A, Meridian Marketplace, replat 1, and on Lot 7, Meridian Marketplace, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report, as the proposal with existing conditions meets the intent of the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and the zoning regulations.
I'll second.
Please vote. Six yays, zero nays, three absent, Dambinski, Van Wielden, Matia, motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd also recommend approval of the preliminary plat of the subdivision to be known as Lots 1 through 7, and out Lot A, Meridian Marketplace, replat 1, being a replat of Lots 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, and 11, all in Meridian Marketplace, the subdivision in Sarpy County, Nebraska, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations.
I'll second.
Please vote. Six yays, zero nays, three absent, Dambinski, Van Wielden, Matia, motion carries.
And Mr. Chair, finally, I'd make a recommendation of approval for a final plat of the subdivision to be known as Lots 1 through 7, and out Lot A, Meridian Marketplace, replat 1, being a replat of Lots 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 9, 10, and 11, all in Meridian Marketplace, the subdivision in Sarpy County, Nebraska, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdivision regulations with the following conditions. A, submittal of an updated wastewater service agreement with the city of Gretna, and payment of any fees required. B, construction of the right-turn lane improvements noted in the traffic study at 168th and Carey, and at Giles and 165th at the applicant's expense. Subdivision agreement would also include the requirement that the improvements be constructed within 18 months of filing of the final plat, and prior to 50% of the apartment buildings in the first phase being permitted for construction. C, reimbursement to county for the 2009 improvements to Giles Road as outlined in the subdivision agreement, and this is to be paid prior to the county signing the final plat. D, contribution toward the installation of a wood pole traffic signal at Meridian and 168th Street, anticipated to be installed within 24 months, and the county would invoice the applicant after completion. E, addressing comments provided by other departments and agencies which were forwarded to the applicant as received. And finally, F, addressing any other comments from planning staff sent separately and attachments to the Planning Department Recommendation Report which were not noted above.
I'll second that one as well.
Please vote. Six yays, zero nays, three absent, Dambinski, Van Wielden, and Matia, motion carries.
Okay, item number three on our public agenda tonight is a public hearing and recommendation for Jasper Stone Partners. They have submitted applications for consideration of rezoning from AG Agricultural Farming District to RE2 Residential Estates 2 District, and preliminary plat of a subdivision to be known as 230th and Harrison Street Estates. Lots 1 through 75, and out lots A through I, being platted of two parcels legally described as northeast quarter, northeast quarter, and tax lots 1 and 5, and tax lot 9, all in Section 15 Township, 14 North, range 10 East of the 6th Post-Meridian, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located southwest of 225th and Harrison Street.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna need to recuse myself at this time for a conflict of interest.
Do we have, do we have a quorum now? Okay.
I thought he was... Sorry for the interruption. Did you already make any announcements? Okay, no, we, I was just discussing whether Commissioner Actley needed to stay in the audience, but I think after understanding there's a nine-member commission here, we've got five for a quorum, so you're good. Good evening again. Julie Ogden presenting on behalf of the county. This development is called the 230th and Harrison Street Estates. I just shortened it so it would fit on the cover. The application request before us tonight includes a change of zoning on the properties. The current zoning is agricultural, their proposed zoning is residential estates 2. They have also provided a preliminary plat for review and recommend approval. And this is a little different than what we've been seeing lately where we have the preliminary plat and final plat together, and it's all one action. Tonight, we are just discussing the preliminary plats, we're looking at the overall concept. Does it meet the comprehensive plan? And does this merit moving forward and working with the developer on a final plat? The future land use for this site is residential estates, and it is located south of Harrison Street, west of 225th, so 225th is over here, and then east of 240th, as 240th kind of angles down in this area. It is north of the Lost Rail Golf Course, if that is a marker for anyone in the audience. This is being proposed as a master plan development. That is a development, and discussed in Section 30.1 of our zoning regulations. And it has three requirements, one of which is all the streets must be paved within the development. The second is community water and/or wastewater system must be included, and it must be a minimum of 160 acres. So we're looking at the larger, more unique properties within the county. What the master plan development allows for is flexibility in the design in how we provide the environmental protections, as well as they generally provide more community amenities within the development than a standard residential subdivision. So for this site, as we've been working with the developer, is they are not necessarily planning at this time to create a sanitary improvement district. They will create a homeowners association which will manage the maintenance of the development and all of its interior improvements, as well as amenities. They are planning on paving the road with ear shoulders and ditches, which we will get into throughout this presentation. And then the environmental protections, there are a number of creeks, a lot of trees as you, as we get to other exhibits across the area. And so they're, they're providing the protections for those areas, not just in outlots, but also with easements, and how they are proposing to have building envelopes on each lot. So the site layout does include 75 residential lots. They are planning to prepare this development, or present this development in four different phases. And each lot will have a defined buildable area. So on this exhibit that they provided to the county as part of the master plan, you can see the yellow areas, which would be the area where buildings would be allowed and grading would be allowed. The green areas around that will remain natural and must be seeded with native grasses, natural plantings, additional tree cover and such. And those will be protected by a permanent easement. And then once the buildings are sited, some additional easement areas for natural grass, or natural plantings may also be added to each lot. And then also on this exhibit, you can see in this area, which is the southeast corner of the development, the locations where they're proposing some of the trails in those kind of reddish areas along with the, the streets. Within the development, they do, they are proposing six flag lots, which is another item that the county doesn't see a whole lot of, and I'm looking. So those are mostly in the southwest portion of the development, where the lots will need to cross the creek in order to gain access. There'll be a single creek crossing proposed with those. One structure shared by the three lot owners, and then they'll, they'll separate for their individual driveways. The outlots do generally follow the creek, creeks. Those are shown kind of in the green shaded areas on this exhibit, and you can see the blue lines where the, the creeks flow. In locations where an outlot is not created, there will be permanent easements, or a combination of both outlot and permanent easement to provide the 3:1 plus 50 setback areas along the creeks that are required as part of the South Sarpy Watershed Development Agreements. The trails will either be in a, in easement, or they will also be located on the outlots in the, along the creek areas. The access and services that they are currently proposing as part of their master plan, they've got two street connections on the north with Harrison. You know, this is kind of a U-shaped type development, one is on the east, one is on the west. They have a single connection to 240th Street, and they have provided a stub-out street to the east that when the adjacent property were to develop, that street could be extended out and connect to 225th Street. They are talking about having these streets be a gated and private streets. That's their plan currently, they will be surfaced with asphalt. Two-lane roads, and that must be on a different exhibit, but two-lane road, ear shoulder, ditches where needed for, for drainage. And they are providing the additional right-of-way dedication along Harrison and 240th both to be 50-foot wide as required with development. Their proposed utility services, they are currently negotiating and discussing with MUD to extend water to this site, so all water to all lots would be provided by MUD. Should tho, that negotiation fail, they will be required to provide a community water system. So each lot will not have their own well, it'll be a series of wells that will serve the community as a whole. The sanitary services would be proposed via individual septic systems, subject to geotechnical verification that that will, will work on those lots. As we had noted, there are a number of creeks throughout the development. You've got a couple photos provided by the developer down there in the bottom, along with a typical kind of creek cross-section in, that is in that area. This is part of the Southern Sarpy Watershed Partnership Agreement, which does require that 3:1 plus 50 protections corridor along all creeks. There are some existing ponds as well, old farm ponds on the site that we want to work with the developer to maintain because those do provide a, a good environment, erosion protection. The, some of the concerns we've got are with the, the slopes across the site, we need to make sure that any road ditches are designed appropriately with appropriate checks to reduce erosion potential, protection of the, the trees and the natural environment where it makes sense, limited tree removal, and then they are, as I've stated, they are proposing that the lots have a required area for native grass and/or tree plantings. The developer has also provided a list of waivers. There's a lot more detail in the staff report, and we can go over those as well. Three of them relate to the roadway design, so this would be the roadways across the board throughout the development. The first was a request to allow the, the roadway longitudinal slopes to increase from 10% to 15%. Their indication for that was to reduce the amount of grading and, and provide additional protections. County engineer made a recommendation not to allow that just because the increased slope could be a safety concern in adverse weather conditions. In addition, if the roadway ditches follow that slope, it's only gonna make the erosion worse. The elimination of curb and gutter on the, the site to go with the rural roads, county engineer did recommend acceptance of that. These are larger lots, single driveways, curb, curb and gutter really, there is a provision in the subdivision regulations that allow elimination of that. And then looking at pavement width, and so here is our typical section that I thought I had on the prior slide. You can see that the two lanes will each be 11, they're proposing 11-foot wide, ear shoulders. County engineer also is accepting of this as long as the roadway is designed to the Nebraska Minimum Design Standards for the anticipated traffic on the roads, and that the pavement thickness is such that meets the geotechnical study and requirements for the traffic to be using them. The last item that we had the, the waiver request on is for the cul-de-sac, and that cul-de-sac is there in the southeast corner. You can see it kind of down here in this area. By the, the subdivision standards, cul-de-sac length should be kept at under 600 feet. From the intersection to the center of the cul-de-sac, it measures out to about 822 feet. The original, the developer had originally proposed this connection over to 225th further south to make that length under the 600 feet. But as you can see, there are developed lots, platted lots over here to the east. So we visited with them and we moved it north so that we didn't have a road pointed towards developed property, which in, which required the length of the waiver. The county engineer has noted in the staff report, had some concerns with the number of lots, and then the singular connection point up here. If you have specific questions on that, Zach is here from Public Works and can answer those. But there is, you know, future connection to 225th when that property develops to provide a secondary access. So we're getting closer to the end, this one took a little longer than I'd anticipated. Staff, should this move forward and receive approval of the final plat, we will continue to work with the developer to make sure that we've got the best plan and the best way to provide the to provide the maintenance for all the shared amenities and public improvement, and the improvement, they're not necessarily public, and the improvements within the development. There will be cost-share agreements for paving of Harrison, especially with the first phase to that first, definitely to the first entrance, more than likely through that whole first section on the property. Future cost shares for improvements, whatever they may be, on 240th when the time comes. The interior roads will remain private. Obviously, if they're gated, they'll be private. Even if they're not gated, they will remain private. And then a community water system is required should the connection to MUD not move forward. So with that, we do recommend approval of the rezoning from agricultural to residential estates too, as that matches the future land use in the comprehensive plan, as well as recommend approval of the final plat, subject to the conditions in our staff report, which include the community water system being provided. Individual septics would be allowed on each lot pending geotechnical verifications that the soils can support those systems. And then we talk about the approval on the waivers, and something I didn't mention when we were on that slide is, we are discussing the waivers now because they impact the overall layout of the development, but the waivers are technically not approved until we get to the final plat stage. So we're looking for your input, asking for that. And within the recommendation, we have noted that the approval of the waiver per Section 12.16.4 would be the elimination of the curb and gutter. County engineer recommended denial of the waiver for the 15% slope to table, on Table 10.1. And he also recommended denial for the cul-de-sac length. However, there are other layouts similar to this across the county that have had approval in the past. So that would be something that we may want to discuss a little more. And then in regards to the waiver for the internal road design standards, that could be approved as long as they meet the Nebraska Minimum Design Standards Title 428, Table 001.03F, and a geotechnical report for the paving design. And as typical, addressing any comments received from other agencies, as well as comments from Planning Department that were supplied to the developer. That was a whole heck of a lot. What do you got for me right now?
Didn't see anything from Gretna. Have they commented at all since they're a quarter-mile away?
We did receive response from Greg Perry, the city engineer for Gretna. It is outside their ETJ. This will not be able to connect to any sort of public sewer system within the city of Gretna. So in essence, he had no comments. Gretna Fire Chief did provide comments, and those were in your packet, related to, you know, he had concerns on the slopes of the streets as well as some of the access. And we did receive, I failed to mention, we did receive three written public comments that were provided for you guys tonight as well. I believe some of those residents are in the audience and may speak to you during the public hearing portion as well. All right. I will close out of this and pull up and pull up the plat.
Nicole Spitzberger, county attorney here. So earlier I made an announcement that we only needed five members to hold a quorum. You need a quorum to have a meeting. It's been a while since I've done this and been here before you all, so I went through and looked at the regulations, the planning rules, and then you need six members to have a quorum. So we're trying to get Tom Ackley back here, determine whether his conflict of interest is a legal or ethical requirement because he may or may not count towards a quorum or may or may not need to be here to make that work. So if we could just take a moment, sorry, but I hate to have all these people here not...
Do it again.
Yeah, do it again. So we're trying to see if Tom can get back. We've given him a phone call, so.
Okay.
If you could take a short recess, we'll get back to you. Yes?
Can I talk to you off mic here?
Yes.
Her presence, you need to ask if she's here.
I'm here, yeah. Just to throw us a question for sure.
Yeah. Well, whoa.
Oh, mine is two now. They all are. We lost our computers.
Our laptops are all going into automatic updates.
Mm-hmm.
So.
We're gonna read them or not?
It just gets better.
Crazy.
Mm-hmm.
I think we started at eight. I think we started at eight. So we got to hear about all the neighbors that didn't want to hear the explosions. We got a lesson in seismic activity and explosions. It's kind of cool, but it's like, this is what I signed up for.
Have the other two been approved already?
Yeah, everything else has been done.
We're good. I believe it.
Cross out Ben.
Yeah. Okay. Yep, we're good.
Okay. The time is now eight twenty-four. Heather Dabinski, Commissioner Dabinski, is here and Commissioner Ackley is absent.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for the interruption, folks, and I appreciate your patience. At this point, I would ask the applicant or the applicant's representative to address the board.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming. Is that we have a quorum? My name is DJ Hinman. I'm with Jasperstone Partners located at one six eight two zero Francis Street in Omaha. We're a local developer and Julie did a fantastic job of giving an overview of the project. I just want to say thank you to her, thank you to Scott, Steve. Really, the whole planning staff has been spectacular to work with. A lot of my experience has been in Omaha and Douglas County, but I would say this has been a breath of fresh air. Just the level of response time and ability to me, we've been working on this for six months. So I appreciate that because I know this is a large site and fairly complex. I would just say as a, from a developer side, Jasperstone Partners, our history has always been in more of these, I would say rustic sites. These are very difficult to develop, but this is really what makes beautiful places. You know, so we're, we're very excited about it. I would just say from, you know, Julie did a great job giving an overview. I would say from my communication to the neighbors, I sent mailers to everyone within 300 feet. And the main thing that everyone was talking about or had concerns over was Harrison Street improvements. Obviously, just with our communication and what Julie has, has mentioned, there is a plan to pave from 216th to 225th, which is already in the works and design is nearly complete and they're planning on sending that out for bid shortly. And our position would be to extend from 225th to a minimum of our first entrance. And that would be before the first home is completed because these lots would all be of higher end quality. So the buyers of these lots would not want to drive on, on gravel roads most likely. So it would be in our position to tie that out as best as possible. So I know that was, one of the main concerns was Harrison Street and 240th as, as well. So we're more than happy to work with the county wherever their direction is on 240th Street. I know a lot of their focus has been on Harrison Street and potentially going south from there. But we are more than happy to continue to work with the county on what they would like to do on, on the western side. From an environmental, I mean, Julie spent two or three slides on it, but I, I would say this is what we find most important when looking at a development that is this rustic and this heavily treed. The western side is, there's almost trees throughout the entire western half of the U. The eastern, I would say a large portion of it is farmed, so it's a little bit easier from a development standpoint. But our position is to not only preserve the, or conserve the primary drainage ways and outlots that those are never touched, never developed, because that's very important, especially as we're close to the Alcorn River. And then 35% of each lot would have to be dedicated to long-term conservation. So, and the, the way we envision this, the way we've done this in past developments is each buyer of a lot would go in and with their building permit, they would disclose the 35% that they would want to conserve long-term. And that, that's just how we've seen it done the easiest in the past, just because every building, every lot is so different. But long-term, an excess of 40% will be conserved long-term. So something we're, we're really excited about. We do not want to take out any trees. All of the waivers that we've requested is all in the vein of how can we keep this parcel as natural as it is today? Because we think that's what truly creates beautiful sites. So with me is Doug Kellner with TD2, so if there are any technical civil questions, he's happy to answer. And then Dave Madden, our counsel, who's helping us with entitlements. And if so, if there's any legal or comprehensive plan questions, he's here as well. So, yeah, that is my testimony from the applicant. Is there, are there any questions that I can answer right now?
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing portion for this item. I invite you to give your input on the proposed action.
Thank you, commissioners, for giving us this opportunity to talk about. My, my name is Brian Sipkis. It's seven eight eight five South 240th Street. Our property, our fam, what we refer to as our family property is immediately to the southwest of this parcel. Our family property shares the line where the old railway used to go through. So our property is just to the west of the southeast portion of this property. My brother-in-law, Jeff Elliott, provided some comments to the planning board, which I believe were shared with you. I just wanted to discuss a couple of those quickly. In fact, I'll just go down his list. The lot size, I think, is approximately three acres per lot with MUD water. I think we have some concern with a water system that is not MUD water and having a public or a shared community water system there. We'd prefer that the lot sizes change if MUD is unable to provide water to the site. There are obviously erosion concerns that we have as the property is being developed. So we'd like to have some assurances on erosion control there. Additionally, and primarily, our concern for our family is access to the east side of our property. That property line that shares where the old railway was, which is what Lost Rail is named after. That area of the property is extremely wooded, but it's also extremely hilly with severe slopes with the creek bed there. And our concern is that by having walking trails along that property line, it's going to encourage people to be in that area of the property, possibly explore onto our side of the property. So we'd like to see adequate fencing to prevent that along that line. And then I think the developer said it well, the gravel roads aren't a whole lot of fun out in that part of the county. 240th Street is the street that we use primarily. It's a dangerous curve. The, the road does not really hold up well. And I think there's some plan for this developer to participate in making that road better. We have some concern just making sure that they follow through with that. There's a bridge that goes over the creek right at the very southwest tip of their property. It's a single-lane bridge. And given the amount of traffic that we're seeing in this area now with the Lost Rail Golf Course and potentially this, we think it's quite dangerous to add too much more to that area. So we would like to see, and I know this is a county thing as well, but we would like to see some additional funding put toward making sure that that's safe in that area. So we thank you again for So we thank you again for your consideration on these items.
Good evening. My name is Kit Lemon and I live just about half a mile south of the southern border of this entire property at about 200, our property is 225th and Carey to 225th and Centennial back west. And so as a crow, crow flies about a quarter mile. And I apologize if I missed this, but one of the questions I had was is-
Ma'am, could you please sign in?
Oh, sorry. One of the questions I had was timeframe. We talked about four phases. This is an awful lot of construction in a small area. And so when you talk about timeframe, I'm trying to envision noise, traffic, and when the wind blows down those hills from the north, most of the time, the trash that all blows down when we go experience construction. So I didn't, I didn't hear what the timeframe for these various phases are. Are we talking about how many homes going in at one period of time over how long a period of time? So that was one question I had. That's actually the only main question I had. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sign in right here.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jason Bovington. 227th and Harrison, 22775 Harrison Street, so our property directly east fence line common to the east side of this property. Just, I had some talk with those guys, great talk, but I just want to make sure we're kind of on the record, my concerns would be like erosion with runoff and then just the road. Dust control, like what is the timeframe? Will you guys require the road to go in before any permits are permitted for the homes? Or i- is this something that's just gonna be in flux? Because I, I worry that it's easier to ask for forgiveness later on down the line, you know, like so could get delayed or, so I think our main concern is just right now, the way the road sits, us property owners all the way down Harrison feel like the county doesn't do a very good job maintaining it. So especially like it rains, there's minimal rock, washboards. We don't see the road graders very often. So that would be my concern. Just wanted to be on the record for that to, to see when, what's the timeframe for road to be built?
You talking about the paving of Harrison?
Yes. So, thank you.
Is there any other public input? I will then close the public hearing. Does the applicant or the applicant's representative like to address any of the concerns brought to the board by the public?
Absolutely. DJ Hinman with the development team, Jasper Stone Partners. I think I have everything written down. The, for Brian's concerns, Julie, can I, how do I? Can I get that up there so I can use the mouse to point it? Oh, okay.
You show the plat up on the screen.
Okay. Oh, there we are.
I thought you had the power. Nope.
Thank you. So Brian's concerns and Brian lives, so he, we share property line for the old railroad bed here and then, and their parcel goes, goes to the west or 240th here. I don't believe they own this one directly to the south. Okay. But they do own this one family compound that goes all the way over here. So the, you know, speaking about erosion control, I spoke to our construction partner on this and they said, this is very standard for, within the covenants to, for the developer to require proper erosion control and to make sure the site is in a cleanse, in a clean state. So we will, as a developer within our covenants, we will ensure, just given the amount of slope on the site, that there is proper erosion control, silt fences, waddles, whatever's needed. The, the shared property line here where our trail is, what I would say in regards to no trespassing, but also just the safety of people who live here, that is, that is also our top priority too. We don't want people trespassing. We definitely don't want people falling, falling down. So all I will say is I, we haven't explored this area perfectly. I know there are a lot of mature trees there, a lot are oak. So my only concern with being required to put a fence in is we definitely don't want to tear out old mature oak trees. But I will say, we will for sure, as a developer, make sure to notate where the property line is. So maybe that could be, you know, a wire fence of, of some sort. It could be a single wire. I don't, I don't necessarily want to say like a chain link fence, because I think chain link fences don't always look the best. And just given the high-end quality that we're going for, that would just really pull away from that. So it could be in areas where it does fall off quite a bit. It could be a three-rail fence there in that area, but for sure posting signs that, that is, this is not our property or potentially like a single wire fence to notate, this is not our property. So that is how I would stage that, you know, the slopes as well as the, the property line. Yeah, I think I chatted through 240th Street. That is just something that we're going to have to continue to work with the county on, because I don't even know if they know exactly what they want to do long-term with 240th Street. So I'll just leave it at that, but yeah, we're happy to continue to work with the county and figure out what we need to put in our subdivision agreement as we go to count, to a final plat. To Kim's statement, she lives a quarter mile to the south of the project down, if I heard it right, off Carey. The timeframe of, of construction, you know, with, with a subdivision this large, we, it is in our best interest as a developer to have this go as quick as possible. In a performa, we have a 10-year sellout period, but that's just a performa and that's just the plan. If the, if the economy continues to do well, we would like to sell out of these as quickly as possible. But obviously, it's very difficult to know how quickly they, they will sell out, but that's currently what we're planning on, just based on our experience. But again, it's, it's not up to us, obviously. So, but that is currently what, what we're planning on. And then Jason's question on just the timeframe of Harrison Street, it is also in our best interest to pave to at least our first entrance as quickly as possible. So if the county, we've had conversations with the county, if we could even tie on to their existing project, that might be a little too quick for them, just because we have to still design from 225th to our interests of 230th. The grade there is not extremely difficult, so depending on when they're planning on starting the project, that could still be a possibility. That would be our preference is to pave it as quickly as possible. You know, but yeah, like I said before, and what I said to Jason in the recess, due to the clientele that we're looking to sell these lots to, they are not gonna move into the house on gravel. That's just the reality. They've got nice cars and they're just not gonna buy a lot without the assurance that the, that Harrison Street is paved and the asphalt roads on the internal are also paved. So I think those are all the, I think I hit on all the questions.
Quick question before you. The only question I have, is your intent to do all the utilities for the whole thing? Not, not per phase?
Yeah, so we would, yeah, we would extend MUD. I've been in conversations with them. I've got a rough opinion of cost already from them. So we would, as soon as we feel good that we're going to be able to get through entitlements, we will for sure kick those conversations off. I think that's, that's the big thing. And we've, we've looked at a community well system and for a subdivision this large, it's also very expensive and you have the long-term maintenance and you have all the neighbors also nervous about, well, is my well, if I'm uphill, is my well gonna dry out? So we hear that. And I think just future development, potentially the Sarpy County School location that they have on, on Harrison, I know they've already got water on 216th, but that's been our position of bringing MUD here. Now, if MUD, like currently, the rough opinion of cost is roughly $2 million is what, what they gave us, just a little under that. Once we actually get into design, if that comes in at $5 million, obviously, we have a different story. But if it's close to there, that's currently what we're planning on is bringing MUD, because the, the community well was not that expensive, but it was still pretty expensive and you have the long-term maintenance of it. So, so that's water. We are also in talks with Black Hills to bring gas. That's currently at 216th Street on the south side, water's on the north side, so we're also in conversation with them to bring that all the way to, to our site. And then for, for sewer, we're planning on doing septic, each one per lot as allowed per code.
Does anybody else have input? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of this item. I'd ask for a motion, but we don't have a printed copy up here and it's not on our screen.
I've got it.
Nicole to the rescue.
That's right. Yep. Thank you. I would ask for a motion on the rezoning item.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the rezoning of AG Agricultural Farming to RE2 Residential Estates 2 on the subdivision to be known as 230th and Harrison Street Estates, lots 1 through 75, and outlots A through I, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department's recommendation report, as the proposal and conditions meet the intent of the Sarpy County Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Regulations.
We need a second. A second. A second. All right, we'll just do a voice vote. Bernock?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Dabinski?
Yes.
Kyrie Leber?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Whitfield?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, three absent, Matea Van Wielden, Ackley, motion carries.
I would ask for a motion on the preliminary plat. Good luck with that. Lot of reading there.
I need the next page.
Sorry.
Yep. Nope. So there's, oh, that's, no, that's it. Yep. Goes to here and here.
Yeah, it's all dash. All right.
So, question for you, Nicole, sorry. Since most of these items in the preliminary plat really are not applicable to the final plat, do we need to make this preliminary conditional on all these or not? If we're just floating the balloon.
I guess I would ask that maybe you provide guidance somehow on the, some of the waivers, whether you agree with the recommendations or not, but they're not binding, correct, Nicole, since we're at the preliminary plat stage?
They're not binding, so we can just read them off as is, knowing that you will at a later point make a final recommendation on all of this.
The developer continued, consider.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend approval of a preliminary plat for the subdivision to be known as 230th and Harrison Street Estates, lots 1 through 75, and lot, outlots A through I in Sarpy County, Nebraska, subject to the comments and attachments in the Planning Department Recommendation Report, as the proposal is consistent with the Sarpy County Comprehensive Master Plan and meets the intent of the Sarpy County zoning and subdevelop, subdivision regulations with the following conditions: that the developer continue to consider a community water system or provide water from MUD; that individual septic tanks, septic systems on each lot would be allowed pending geotechnical verification that the soils can support such a system; that we consider approval of the waiver requests for Sections 12.16.4, allowing elimination of curb and gutters; that we deny, that we consider denying the waiver request for Table 10.1 to increase the slopes to 15% and to extend the minimum cul-de-sac lengths under Table 10.1. In regards to the waiver request for Sections 12.16.4.2, the design of the internal roadway network must meet the Nebraska Minimum, Minimum Design Standards, Table 428, Table 001.03F, and that geotechnical report design recommendations must be followed; that we also address comments provided by other departments and agencies that have been forwarded to the applicant as they are received, and we address any other comments from the planning staff sent separately and attachments to the Planning Department Recommendation Report that were not noted above.
Second, Dabinski. Again, we'll do a voice vote. Bernock?
Yes.
Huddleston?
Yes.
Dabinski?
Yes.
Kyrie Leber?
Yes.
Weiss? Whitfield?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, three absent, Matea, Ackley, Van Wielden, motion carries.
That concludes the public portion of our meeting tonight. To the audience, I appreciate your patience with, with some of our issues tonight. Thank you. Okay. We're not done yet. Do the commissioners have any comments or reports? How about the Planning Department?
No comments received.
We good? How are we, how are we looking for February 18th?
We, as far as, I mean-
So we have no applications for February. So you have that month?
Okay, we, you know, after Bermuda, we are then. So is there any other items that need to be addressed tonight? I will then declare the meeting adjourned. Gavamila Mahakat, August-